Good evening, everyone. Tewksbury Zoning Board of Appeals for February 27th, 2020 is in session. First order of business, approval of the minutes from January 30th, 2020.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from January 30th, 2020.
Motion is made.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Minutes are approved. All right, we're gonna skip one agenda item real quick and do the second one first.
Angel Lisa humans for variance from section 4130 appendix B for minimum lot size of the Tewksbury zoning by law to construct a single family home as shown on plans filed with this board. Said property is located at 74 Adams Road, assessors map 18 lot 21 zone residential.
We have a letter from the applicant for this one asking to be withdrawn without prejudice. So if somebody would like to make a motion to do that.
Make a motion to accept the withdrawal of the application for Angel Lisa humans for variance of section 4130 appendix B for the minimum lot size of the Tewksbury zoning by law to construct a single family home as shown on plans filed with the board. Said property is located at 74 Adams Street, assessors map 18 lot 21 zone residential.
Just to have a felt prejudice for me.
Without prejudice.
Thank you. Motion has been made.
Second.
Second, and all in favor?
Aye.
All right. And we'll go back to the first one.
Town of Tewksbury, on behalf of Richard E. and Gail A. McDonald, trustees of Alton Realty Trust, for variance from section 4130 appendix B for minimum lot size of the Tewksbury zoning by law to accommodate the construction of the new center fire station as shown on plans filed with this board. Said property is located at 970 Main Street, assessors map 47 lot 78 zone commercial.
Good evening, Mr. Sadwick.
Good evening, Steve Sadwick, Assistant Town Manager. You filed this, the town filed this application on behalf of the McDonald's and Austin Realty Trust. I think along with this application, there was a explanation as to how we got to this point. The McDonald's own the property that is in front of where we plan on building the new fire station. And in order to accommodate turning and maneuvering of fire apparatus on the town-owned parcel, the McDonald's agreed to a land exchange with the town of Tewksbury. So they're looking to give the town approximately 2,500 square feet in exchange for 1,400 square feet on their side yard. So what happens with this is the pre-existing non-conforming lot, which is the McDonald's lot at 970 Main Street, is made more non-conforming because it was originally under one acre and the exchange decreases that by about 1,100 square feet. The rear yard setback decreases from 78 to 53 feet, but that still complies with the zoning by law. The left yard setback remains unchanged at eight feet. The right yard setback increases from 33 feet to 43 feet. And the frontage of the property increases from approximately 93 to 103 feet. So in this variance request for the lot size, you have a decrease from .3 acres to .35 acres, but the exchange and the granting of the variance would increase the frontage of the property and write setback while the, and then the increase in frontage would allow for greater access to the site. So the real relief that's being requested is from appendix B, which is the dimensional table of the zoning by law. And that is the minimum lot size of one acre for lots in the commercial district. Like I said, this would be going from .38 acres to .35 acres.
So the lot was already .38?
Correct.
And it's just dropping down to .35?
Correct.
Okay. And this is to facilitate the turning of the vehicles?
Correct, to the fire station.
Any questions, board members?
Who's on this one?
Let's make our break.
No questions.
Do you still have questions?
I don't have any. It sounds to me like everything's increasing with the exception of the structure on the lot size.
And it's a good project for the town. Definitely could use a new fire station.
Absolutely.
Anything else? All right, being a public hearing, we'll open it to the public at this time. If anyone here would like to speak? Nope, seeing no one. Anything else, Mr. Sadwick?
That's it.
Okay. Anything else, board members?
Nope.
Somebody would like to make a motion to close both parts of the hearing?
I'd like to make a motion to close both parts of the hearing.
Motion's been made.
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
All right. So it's not much. It's a .3 in a lot that's already non-conforming.
Right. I see nothing of that. Too straightforward. I'd like to make a motion to approve the town of Tewksbury on behalf of Richard E. and Gail A. McDonald, trustees of Alton Realty Trust, for variance from section 4130 appendix B for a minimum lot size of the Tewksbury zoning by law to accommodate the construction of a new center fire station as shown on plans filed with this board. Said property is located at 970 Main Street, assessors map 47 lot 78 zone commercial.
Motion's been made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
MIT LLC for variance from section 4130 appendix B for commercial side yard setbacks, section 3640 for the reconstruction, extension or structural change of a non-conforming structure and a special permit under section 3630 to reconstruct, extend, alter or change a non-conforming structure of the Tewksbury zoning by law to remove existing retail convenience store and construct a new retail convenience store as shown on plans filed with this board. Said property is located at 2512 Main Street, assessors map 94 lot 65 zone commercial.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, David Plunkett, representing the applicant, MIT LLC, the owner of the parcel at 2512 Main Street. With me here tonight also is Jim Hanley, the consulting engineer for the project. Chairman, just as a measure of housekeeping, the application, we reference sections 3640 and 3630.
Yes.
But after further thought, the site has the sufficient, has sufficient area and frontage. And looking further at the denial letter from the building inspector, I believe that the only thing that we really need is the variance from section 4130 appendix B, the commercial side yard setback. I think the other sections are appropriate as a reference point though because of the, you know, what, you know, the intent of those sections in the bylaws are to foster redevelopment within the town. But what I'd like to do first is just have Mr. Hanley review the site plan relative to the proposed location of the property. And just for identification of the site, this is the Hobart Country Store that's right on Main Street and probably a more appropriate reference point, it's the business that's five point, I think 5.7 feet off of Main Street on our Route 38 corridor. And you can.
Sure. So let me, let me go back a second before you start. So you don't believe you need 3640 or 3630?
I, I was thinking that, looking at the, the building inspector's letter, he just references the need for variance under 4130 appendix B for the setback. I think that was because the, you have more than an acre of land and you have more than 150 feet of frontage. So the parcel in and of itself is a conforming parcel. The current use, or the current building on the, on the parcel is non-conforming, as you can see from the description, the, it's like four feet from the sidelines, it's five feet from the Route 38 corridor, but that's gonna be raised in its entirety because it's, it's a building circa 1900. It has no ability to, for any usefulness for somebody to put money in for a new venture, a new business along our Route 38 corridor. So, so the building's gonna be raised, which then when you take it from that perspective, it leaves us with this, you know, conforming parcel of land. But again, for reference, I think it's still an appropriate reference because of the fact that when you look at the purpose of those sections, it is to give incentive to people to come in and revitalize or redevelop and do something in a manner that's gonna be, makes sense economically and as importantly, important to the, to the person who's gonna put this kind of investment in, they're only gonna do it if it makes sense economically. But also from the perspective of the, of the town to, you know, Route 38 corridor, that's, you know, for many years, you know, in the town, we've been trying to get people in, invest, make that a better, you know, that's our, that's our hot of our commercial activity. And this is an opportunity to take this 1900 building that's gone well beyond its usefulness and have somebody come in and build a brand-new building, align it so it's appropriate to Main Street and, and the, the variances that we're requesting are still gonna be much less of a non-conformity than what's currently there and eliminate probably the most onerous or the worst of the existing non-conformities, which is that, you know, situation right up basically on, on Route 38.
Okay.
Okay, great. I have a couple of exhibits here, these weren't submitted with the application, but I thought they might be helpful for purposes of following.
Thank you.
Along. So this is a picture here of the existing site with the property line on that. And then, you know, we, we put together the plan for the denial letter, but that doesn't give you a lot of context on what exactly is gonna belong. So I thought it might be helpful just to kinda overlay the two so you can see what we're actually proposing. So just to reintroduce myself, my name's Jim Hanley, I'm a civil design consultant. Just gonna kinda give you a brief overview of existing conditions, proposed conditions. And I think David will probably talk about why we're here and the variance in more detail. But again, the location of the property is 2512 Main Street, it's Hobart's Country Store. Currently, they have a liquor slash convenience store type use there and they have for quite some time. It was built in plus or minus 1900, it's a wood crane, 32, 3,244 square foot, two and a half story building. The site is plus or minus 1,000 feet from the Wilmington line. It's across the street from State Street and it sits on about 1.2 acres. So we are in excess of the minimum lot area of one acre. We also have 218 feet of frontage, again, in excess of 150 feet of minimum requirement. The lot area is probably about 50% wetland and I think that is illustrated on the plans that were provided so you can kinda see what we're up against from the wetlands, which are located, geez, maybe 200 feet off of Main Street, give or take. There's a large, currently, if you look at the existing exhibit I gave you, there's a large open parking area to the south of the building. And just to kinda queue in on where the building is now, you can see it in the bottom left-hand corner, we're 9.7 feet from the state right-of-way with 38. Current zoning requires 50 feet, so we're well within that currently. The side yard setback, the closest portion of the side yard setback is actually the back left-hand corner of the existing building. If you're looking at it from the street, that's plus or minus three feet. It's 3.1 feet away from that side yard setback right there. So we have a situation where the existing building is, I guess it would be considered existing non-conforming from a dimensional perspective. So if you take a look at what we're proposing here on the, on the proposed exhibit, essentially, this is, this is a 4,295 square foot building. Ideally, the applicant wanted to get as much as 5,000 square feet or even more. We have quite a few constraints here, not just from the, from the yard setback, we also have to deal with the wetland setbacks that are at the rear of the site and try to, try to balance that all out. And we're on Route 38, so we have access challenges as well to satisfy state DOT. So we're gonna maintain the use, again, it'll be some combination of a liquor and convenience store. The new building obviously will be 100% ADA accessible and we're gonna bring the new building in compliance with the front yard setbacks. We're actually plus or minus 57 feet off of the right-of-way. Again, the existing building is nine feet. So this building will be brought into compliance to address the front yard setback. Just to kinda give you a little bit of an overview on the, on the site itself, one-way traffic circulation from the south to the north, plus or minus 17 parking spaces and we'll have provisions for landscaping, dumpsters, you know, in utilities. If you'd like to go, if you'd like me to go into the, some other stuff, I can do that too.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so I guess why are we here? We're here for the signal variance, which is to allow for reduction from the side yard setback from 30 feet to 14 and a half feet. And there's a couple of things that I'd have you note and I'm sure David will, will reinforce it here, but the existing side yard setback, again, is 3.1 feet. We're increasing that up to 14 and a half feet. So we're increasing it by almost, you know, five times what it is now. Another thing that I think is a consideration is that there's a proposed zoning change coming through here, which will require or allow for a 15-foot setback. And that's a proposed 2020 zoning change. That's just a consideration, but it's something that in, in the future, this will be pretty much in line with exactly what that proposed zoning is gonna be. So in some, in summary here, I tried to talk to you about the existing conditions, the proposed conditions in the variance. And I guess the only thing I'd leave you with is that we've, we've kinda beat this around with the town already. We've gone to two of their interdepartmental reviews where we sat down with the engineer, conservation, town engineer, town planner, got some initial feedback, wanted to get back for a second one. And we actually went to conservation because they're a critical piece with the wetland in the back in a conceptual preliminary manner, just to try to make sure that what we're proposing, everybody is good with. So we've really tried to kinda do our homework and that's where we stand.
Did you say how tall the building was?
The proposed?
Yes.
So it'll definitely be within the two and a half story, 35-foot limitations. Because this is a bit of a challenge from a permitting perspective, we don't have full architecturals yet. From speaking with the client and speaking with the architect, it's likely gonna be one and a half stories, so there'll be probably dormers out of the roof that might be for storage or something. But basically, it's gonna be a one-story building that, that will actually have the, the commercial use to it.
Okay. What are you gonna have behind the building? Would that be parking? Would it be landscaping?
Yeah. Nothing. Nothing. If, if anything, so, so if you were to look at the existing sketch that we have. You can, you can see the top middle of it, you can see kind of a degraded area.
Yep.
Actually, we have a volleyball court back there, but it's literally up against the wetlands. So part of what we're proposing is from the wetlands to the 25-foot restoring, watching 3800 square feet of area and then putting a row of planting. So there's nothing back there. The only thing that may be back there is maybe a stormwater pond or something, but it's not there yet.
Well, the reason I was asking was, as you're facing the building to the right, would that be enough room to get a fire truck around that if need be?
No, no, but what we, what we are proposing is a five-foot walk back there. So we have, the, the fire department has been in the IDR meetings and essentially they want access to three of the four sides. And based on what we have here, I believe it's sufficient.
What's the square footage of the current structure that's gonna be raised?
The, the square footage of the structure is 3,400 square feet. I believe the footprint area is closer to 1,600 square feet, give or take, because it is a two and a half story structure.
And the proposed building?
What? 4,294 square feet.
I guess my question is why, why if you're building a brand-new structure, why wouldn't you conform to the current zoning by law, bylaws?
Chairman, if you look at the, the alignment of the lot, and I think this goes to the issue of, of the variance, the grounds for granting of the variance, it doesn't make sense to have this building aligned any way other than parallel to Main Street. The problem that you have with the lot here is that it's not symmetrical, it goes off to the, it goes off to the left. So in order to try to maximize the utilization of the lot, if you try to align it with the curve of the, the slant of the lot, you're gonna have a building that doesn't make sense from the perspective of what the town wants along the 38 corridor. They don't want something that's, you know, it makes no sense that you've got 38 coming along here, they would have anything but a building that's gonna be parallel to make the best impression from those going along that Route 38 corridor and have it make sense. Have it make sense relative to the, how it's gonna be viewed and how it's gonna be aligned on the, on the lot. Because of the nature of the configuration of the lot, that is, you know, why, you know, the, the need to still have something that's not totally conformant, because otherwise you wouldn't be able to configure it sufficiently to make it worth the investment of doing what is gonna happen here. We're talking about somebody coming in and taking down this building that's nine feet from Route, uh, Route 38 and three feet off of the sideline. And it makes sense only to have it aligned with, with Route 38. Limitations because of the wetland location, you know, again, these are all go to the issue relative to the grant of a variance. Something specific to the site, to the soil of the, of the, of the parcel. The wetlands is something that's specific to the soil on the parcel. The configuration of the lot is something that if you look at the, at the map, the assessors map that was part of the, you know, the submittal, most of the parcels are more symmetrical in nature or more squared off as opposed to what we have here. You have this nice frontage, nice area that you would align a building with Route 38 if you're gonna go in and, or redevelop it, but you have a situation where this back pot is skewed off to the left. So that's, that's the reality of it, that's the nature of the parcel itself. And again, that goes to the key elements of the grant of a variance. It's something that is gonna be a commercial use in the commercial zone. It's gonna be something that is necessary in order to maximize and make use of it. If, if you had to comply completely with the setbacks, you're gonna have a situation where it would be a financial hardship because no one's gonna come in and try to rehab or redevelop this parcel because it wouldn't make sense. It wouldn't make sense. And so the variance would allow the ability of the parcel to be maximized in a manner that is commercially, makes sense commercially and also makes sense from the perspective of the town. As we said initially, that Route 38 corridor, for years we've been trying to get this type of redevelopment in town and this is an opportunity to do so.
You know, if I can just add too, in, in terms of lot geometry, which is one of the considerations that we, we look at when we, the variance, we have plus or minus 218 feet of frontage here. And if we were to comply, which we do, with the front yard setback, that puts the building basically between this odd corner here. And if we were to just draw a line here, parallel with, with Main Street through the building here, that 218 decreases down 155 feet. So we have this odd lot that if we try to maintain the front yard setback, we get reduced by almost 30% of the area where the building will actually be in width. So just, one thing I just wanted to note to you is that this is kind of our pinch point right there. And that's nothing but a result of the lot geometry of the lot.
On the picture that you gave us, on your sideline dimensions, you got C note two?
Yes.
Which print are those notes on?
Yep. That's simply, there's a. That would be that print there, that's hanging up there and I can give you.
This one?
These here and it's just referencing the required relief.
Well, we have a bunch of them in our packet. We got P.
Do you have the layout materials?
Layout materials planned?
Yes. So that would be note two. And all in usage.
It's really hard to read.
Yeah, so this one is a little less hard to read.
Less hard to read is better.
Okay. Please note the existing building is located 3.1 feet from the set property line. Please note the existing building is located 3.1 feet from the set property line.
How far would you have to pull that building forward to get 15 feet on that side?
On, on both sides, 15 feet?
Yep. Well, you have 18 on one side.
Yep.
And a little, almost 19.
Right.
And the, the back right corner, you got 14.5?
Yes.
How far would you have to pull that forward to get 15?
Um, it's like 38 feet. Yes, I, we, what we'd end up doing is just cutting off maybe a foot of the length, so from 113 to 112 would be the face. I can't really pull it up because of the accessibility of vehicles through the parking area and have minimum setbacks for that, minimum space sizes. So I'm kinda pinned on that line, I can't move it closer. So I'd be forced to remove maybe a half a foot from the length of the building to get the 15 feet.
What I'm thinking is, in appendix B, it's 15 feet for dwellings and 30 feet for parole others. So if that was a dwelling, you'd only need 15.
Mm-hmm.
And like you said, if, if it does change to 15 and you're so close to it?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I mean, we'd only, we'd only be losing 39 feet, square feet of area in the building, so I think it's something we could, could probably consider.
Right, but you couldn't, you wouldn't wanna just pull it forward? It looks like you have a pretty good angle on your, on your property line.
Yeah, if I could, I would. And we've looked at it a couple of times. Basically, from the face of the building, I have five feet, might even be four feet now at this point, a four and a half foot sidewalk, 18 and a half foot deep spaces, and we only have a 20-foot wide traffic aisle. And that's for one-way traffic and 20 feet is a minimum that is required by the fire department. So I really can't pull it forward. If I could, I definitely would.
So it's not, it's not cutting into like landscaping or something in front of you? So, it's not, it's not cutting into like landscaping or something in front of you, the proposed building?
Right, right, exactly. It's just a four-and-a-half-foot wide concrete sidewalk in the front. To go tighter than that, you know, you'd, at some point...
Yeah, this is something I was looking at.
Yeah.
All right, anything else, Paul, on this?
On this diagram right here?
Yes.
Is this the, going to be the dumpster?
Yes, yep.
So, this is going to be pavement all the way to about six feet from the...
Four-and-a-half feet, yep, four-and-a-half feet from the face of the building. That's where the parking will begin. In between that will be a concrete sidewalk. So, I have a building, four-and-a-half-feet-wide concrete sidewalk along the whole face, and then we go into our parking area.
Anything else written, board members? We can open, open it to the public. Being a public hearing at this time, we'll open it to the public. If anyone's here, like to speak on this? No? All right, seeing none. Anything else?
Just in summation, Mr. Chairman, I would say that this is something that is, you know, a classic call for granting a variance, that it is something that can be attributed to the topography, not the topography, but the shape of the, of the parcel and the soil conditions that limit the ability as to the placement of the structure. That it is something that is not contrary to the zoning bylaws, because it is a commercial use in the commercial zone, and in fact, would be the total opposite of detrimental to the town. It's something that's going to be of great advantage to the town. It's going to contribute to the revitalization of our Route 38 corridor. And this is the type of development that is envisioned and encouraged within the zoning bylaws by allowing on non-conforming lots to substitute and redevelop non-conforming structures. And clearly, this structure here is going to be as close to Route 38 as you can get, and is not the type of development that the town wants to have, or would encourage to, to retain that as opposed to enticing somebody or incentivize somebody to come in and invest in this town and put up the type of structure that they're envisioning here. So, and without the variance, then it would be a financial hardship because of the fact that you can't, you can't get the benefit, the financial benefit of this parcel of land unless you're allowed to do the type of redevelopment that's envisioned here. And I would say that that meets all the criteria for the grant of a variance, and we respectfully, respectfully request that the board vote the variance as requested.
Now, who come up with the 3630 and 3640? Let's talk about that for a minute.
That, that was my...
That was yours?
Thought, because I was looking more at the existing building, thinking that that was relative to what we were doing. But then, in retrospect, excuse me, thinking that, you know, and again, looking how the building commissioner referenced only the setback, the need for the setback variance, and, you know, appreciating, you know, the reason for that is that, you know, I think that those sections would be more, if we tried to come in on that building and it was a non-conforming lot, and we were trying to rehab the building on the non-conforming lot. So, this is a new structure on a conforming lot where we're going to raise an existing non-conforming structure. But the, the need for the new structure would be addressed by the grant of the variance.
Right, but if you look at, if you look at 3630, it's to alter or change a non-conforming structure. So, you're changing it, and you're changing it to a, another non-conforming structure.
That's true.
I almost agree with you that...
Okay, then...
You do need it.
All right, then, I suppose it doesn't hurt to have, and it would still, it's still the same criteria. Under those sections there, it's a matter of, and that's more specific in terms of criteria, not some, not the, not necessarily relegated to the criteria for the grant of a variance per se. It's something that's specific to the intent of the town to try to, again, get rid of some of these older non-conforming structures and get something in that's better and less non-conforming. And so, that clearly would meet that criteria, that this is less non-conforming.
It, it's definitely better and less non-conforming.
Yeah, it eliminates totally the most onerous of the non-conformities of this building, that it's going to be in excess of the setback from Route 38, as opposed to 9.5, and it's going to be less non-conforming from the sidelines. So, so, we would retain our request in total. And in the, again, under the special permit provisions, it clearly meets the criteria that's set out in the, in the zoning bylaw.
What do you think about 3640?
3640 would be the same thing in terms of, that's specific to a commercial lot as opposed to the, I think, 3640 one goes into the residential lot, but that's specific to the commercial lot. And again, it's, it's, the intent is clear by the language that is for the purposes of trying to give incentive or allow the ZBA as the permit grant and authority, the right to allow people to come in and develop a structure that's going to be better than the structure that was there and of benefit to the town by means of having this improved, updated structure.
You know, I don't think you need, I don't think you need 3640. 3640 is more building on the existing building that you have.
Okay. Okay, so, we were raising it then. But the 3630 then, as you pointed out, Mr. Chairman, it does specifically say, making a, you know, replacing a non-conforming structure with a less non-conforming structure, and the incentive to do exactly what they're trying to do here before you today, tonight.
I don't think either of them.
You advertise for all of it, so...
Yeah.
You tell me what you want.
Well, your honor, I'm sorry.
Good enough.
I was in court earlier today, sorry. Mr. Chairman, I would say that, that if we, I believe we do meet the criteria for all of them. So, in retrospect, I'd rather have a situation that we get, if someone says, "Well, maybe you didn't need it, but we have it." It, it, it meets the criteria that's set out in the zoning bylaws. So, I would request that a positive vote on, on all matters that have been requested and advertised and sent out to the above.
I agree with you. I mean, you advertise for it.
Yeah.
All right, anything else, board members?
No.
Anything else?
That's it, Mr. Chairman.
All right, so, voting members on this one, it'll be us three. You're out. It'll be us three on this one.
Okay.
Somebody would like to make a motion to close both parts of the hearing?
Make a motion to close both parts of the hearing?
Motion's been made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, any discussion?
My only issue. I agree with Attorney Conket on revitalizing Route 38. It's going to be, it looks like it's going to be amazing if you're completely raising a structure. So, you have a blank sheet of paper. Why can't we conform to the, to the laws?
Well, we've closed, we've closed both parts of the hearing, so this is a discussion for us.
Yeah, correct.
I understand that you want to get the most bang for your buck out of the, out of the piece of property. To make it, to make it smaller, you just not getting the bang for your buck.
I mean, my theory is it's been non-conforming since day one.
You would have to take off, I'm sorry, you'd have to take off 27, I wrote it down somewhere, 27-plus feet of that building to make it fit. Now, you're getting kind of small for a commercial building.
No, I know that the commercial building that's existing there is half the size of what they're building.
Yeah, it is.
So, they're doubling the square footage of the size of the building.
But still having...
And they're not conforming to the current bylaws. It does, revitalize 38, it's going to be a great building. I know this exact area. I know exactly what they're saying. But if you're giving a blank piece of paper, why would you automatically, right off the rip, need the variance?
You make a valid point.
I understand what you're saying, but I'm just looking at the property and the ability of all the property they have in the back, and they can't use because of the wetland. It kind of restricts them. And the front of the buildings, it appears to me, just, you know, eyeballing the document, it looks like the front of the buildings would be in compliance. It's just the rear parts of the building where you hear the curve of the property, or the...
So, it actually brings up another question that you had brought up about the fire department having access to the back of the building. They won't, right? They wouldn't be able to get to either side of the building?
They will. No, they should, on this side, they should.
But it's, it's not paved back there. So, they wouldn't be, they wouldn't be bringing a truck back there anyways.
Per the statement earlier, they only require three sides access.
Three sides? Is that three sides by the truck or three sides by...?
Even three sides by the truck, they have it.
Yeah.
You know, I don't see them driving around, even attempting to drive around the back of it with, with it being wetlands. And there's going to be a sidewalk all the way around it.
Mm-hmm, it's nice.
So, they have...
Just needed.
Four-foot-wide concrete sidewalk. So, they plenty have access to it. And the way I look at it is, if it was a dwelling, right, in the, in the commercial, if it was a dwelling, it would need 15. Being that it's a business, it needs 30. Like the applicant mentioned, it might go down to 15. And if you look at the other, I guess you can see it in bold, the existing dwelling on the other side is a substantial distance away on the right side of the pages we're looking at it.
You know, is that residential?
I don't know.
Is it residential to the right of it? I don't think so. I think it's office buildings, isn't it?
To the right is commercial. By this commercial.
Isn't that my dog rumor? Isn't that Mark to the right?
I thought it was. Isn't that where your dentist is?
Not my dentist.
In that area? Because that's where he sells pizzas, I guess.
Sounds like you. And this is just some sheds.
Yeah.
And that residence is a significant distance away.
Is that a house?
Whatever it is.
I don't know what that was.
I think it's a nice improvement to the lot.
Absolutely.
And I, I understand the point of build as much as you can.
That's the part I'm having a hard time with. I mean, it's going to be great, it's going to look great. I'm not going to, I'm not going to stop it from happening. I'm just voicing my concern.
And I was thinking the same thing. Let's just take almost 30 feet off that building?
Yeah, for a section, a small section of the building.
It would still be bigger than the current.
It would be, but why make it...
Right, but would it be profitable? You know, taking that much square footage off that building? You want them to succeed all the way?
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Especially being there for so many years. It's nice to see it grow.
And if they haven't bought it, bought that up, that's definitely a plus.
Let's vote on it.
Are we just doing for the 4130 only?
No, we're going to do all of it.
Oh, we are?
Yep. Let me find the application again.
Okay, I mean, it's all on there. It's just me, Dan, and you?
Yeah.
All right.
We're doing, we're doing all of them or just 4130?
Yes, all of them.
All of them.
So, do the special permit first. 3630 is the special permit. Oh, send you on it, yeah.
It's my work. That's why.
I guess, yeah.
Dan?
Oh, you want me to do it?
Yeah.
All right, sure. I'd like to make a motion to close...
Oh, that's right, yeah, we got to do that. Yep. No, we already did that.
We did.
Don't confuse me.
So, I'd like to make a motion to approve...
That's correct.
The variance from Section 4130.
No, we're going to do, we're going to do the special permit first, 3630. And then, we'll do the variances together. So, it'll be two motions.
So, I'd like to make, make a motion to approve Section 3630 to reconstruct, extend, alter, or change a non-conforming structure that took very zoning bylaw to remove existing retail convenience store and construct a new retail convenience store as shown on plans filed with this board. Said property is located at 2512 Main Street, assessor map 94, Lot 65, Zone Commercial.
Motion's been made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so, that one's approved. Now, you want, we can do the variances together.
4130 and 3640?
Correct.
Yes.
So, I'd like to make a motion to approve the variance, Section 4130 and a variance for Section 3640 for the reconstruction, extension, or structural change of a non-conforming structure and a special permit...
No.
I apologize, of the took spray zoning bylaw to remove existing retail convenience store and construct a new retail convenience store as shown on plans filed with this board. Said property is located at 2512 Main Street, assessor map 94, Lot 65, Zone Commercial.
Second.
Motion's been made, and second at all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. You're all set.
Thank you very much.
Good luck, thank you.
Thank you.
On your book, on the right.
All right, you can go on now.
Yeah.
All right, I'm okay now.
Today is Linda Anderson for variance from Section 4130, appendix B for front yard setback of the took spray zoning bylaw to construct a family suite as shown on plans filed with this board. Said property is located at 117 10th Street, assessor's map 83, Lot 98, Zone Residential.
May?
Yeah.
All right. Come on up, have a seat, please. If you would state your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is Linda Anderson from 117 10th Street, took spray.
David Consella, architect, Seven Bridge Street, Billerica, Mass.
Thank you. Tell us a little bit about what you're doing, please.
Okay. So, they want to add an accessory apartment to the left side of the house here. It's an existing house. The lot's landlocked because there's no street frontage. There is a paper street running up the left side here. So, the paint, edge of paved road ends right in here. So, the front of their house right now faces their side yard, and I guess the town is taking this as the frontage. So, we have, we have located the addition of the MR suite with the breezeway on this side, so we don't comply with the front setback. We only have 19 feet, not the 25 under the bylaw. So, they need, basically, Linda and her husband live in the main house. The daughter Rebecca wants to move in with her husband and their daughter. Both Rebecca and her husband have... her husband and their daughter. Both Rebecca and her husband have, Rebecca has epilepsy and her husband has a seizure disorder. Linda's a nurse, so it would benefit them if they could move in next to the mother. So, if they needed her assistance. Right now, they're living outside the town. Linda and her son, her daughter and son-in-law all work within the town of Tewksbury, and they'd like to stay in Tewksbury. So, they're looking to add a, an apartment for the family. And because we don't meet the zoning bylaw, we're here in front of you folks tonight.
Do I have that printed in my packet?
Should have a plot plan.
No, this will work.
I can run through the addition if you want. And I'm happy to do so.
So, what are we calling? So, the house sits crooked on the property?
Yes, it does.
Here's the street right here, and it runs right along this, but this is paper. It's not paved, not improved. So, they don't actually have a frontage on the street. So, they access here. You can see they have a large driveway, plenty of room for parking.
So, wait.
Add it here to the left side.
Explain this to me a little bit. I'm looking at this print, right? You can show me on that one. Where is 10th Street?
Right here. It runs down. This is end of pavement, right here.
It sounds actually a cul-de-sac.
Okay.
And where are the cul-de-sac? We're at the very end.
You have the pavement right here. See what says Future? This is all dirt. It's paper street. So, they drive in across, right across here to get into their property.
So, there's no street here?
No.
This is your side yard?
There's condos all around and 170 units.
So, that, all right. It's weird how that was built.
Yeah, yeah.
It's actually not on its original foundation either. Our home was actually on 38 and it was moved, I want to say approximately 40 years ago. My husband had to work tonight, so that's why he's not here. I believe the house was actually moved about 40 years ago.
And put on a new foundation on this property?
Yeah. Yeah, it's not on its original foundation. And I do want to, I'm sorry, do want to correct. They actually do live with me. They're not outside the home. They're in my home, sharing one bedroom.
Oh, three people in one bedroom's a little difficult.
Yes. So, and again, as you explained, my daughter does have epilepsy. My son-in-law does have a seizure disorder and actually just had seizures about two months ago. I had to be 911 from, with Tewksbury Fire. So, that's why we do want to try to have them close by for obvious reasons.
So, now you're looking at, now you're looking at a non-conforming because of a paper street that's not even met.
Right.
That, that's our hardship primarily. I mean, there's no, if the street was paved, they could put the addition behind the house because they'd have access. If we want to go to behind the house, they have to basically cut through the entire yard either way, either in the front or the rear, to get to that addition.
Right.
So, Future Street is non-existent, right?
Right.
Which is, that we're just calling it Future Street?
Paper street. Means it's on paper somewhere, but they never built it.
Right.
They never built it and they never named it.
And right here, the paved road.
Yes, yes. It was confusing to me, too. So, the front door actually faces the side yard?
Yes.
That's just another resident here?
Yes.
Yes. So, we look out and we see this side of their house.
Because their house, like, faces 10th Street?
Right.
You're looking at the side of the-
Exactly. Exactly. Yeah.
It's, yeah, it's a bit odd.
And we're going to be raising a garage to make room for this.
That garage is existing right now?
Yeah, it's-
It's attached on the left side of the house.
Yeah.
Where you're going to build the-
Yes.
Yes.
And the garage is 15 feet from the Future Street?
Yes.
Whereas the actual house would be 19 feet from-
Yeah. So, we're improving.
Yeah.
I guess that's the point. Getting closer to conformity, if we can count a paper street as your frontage.
Yeah, I know. Right.
Do you have all these Porsches? Do you have all these Porsches? That's a Porsche.
I wish. I wish I had a Porsche. I have a Lexus. That's my dream car.
You put it on your drawing.
I know. I know.
That's what we put on the drawing. I wish I had one.
I know. Just to add to, I also have a teenage son as well, who lives in that home. I went to college.
I have a teenage son, too. He can probably live in a garage.
So can my son.
No front door on the family suite?
No. We're doing a common, like, a-
A breezeway entrance.
And here will be the entry, and it goes, it goes into her side door here-
Mm-hmm.
And entrance here. And then we'd have our required second means of egress other on the side or the rear, or the front, I guess, depending on your point of view.
Yeah, right. So, that, that is the front.
Does that, on the building commissioner's refusal to write application, he notes in here, review of the floor plan submitted for the family suite, it's noted that there is a basement. This area would be considered part of the family suite. Due to the correct location, the lower designated family suite area is accessible by the family suite only. But he's not indicating any violation. Is that something that we need to look at?
I think that's within the purview of the planning board. We have to go for a special permit to get the accessory apartment.
And if that's because of the entryway, because it doesn't have its own entryway, that it becomes part of the family suite?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm looking at the common entry, so there's only two entrances. One primarily for her back door. We can put an exit there. But she's even willing to take out the front door.
Yeah, I'm willing to close off my current front door-
No one uses it.
To make the access, the breezeway to be more of the front door. And then we'll have a back door.
So, what the building, what the building commissioner is saying is, Section 3400, a family suite, contains not more than 800 square feet. So, he's pointing out that the basement would be added because it's under the family suite or flows with the family suite.
Do they need a variance?
So, that would-
We actually are asking for, I guess, the planning board can grant us a larger family suite, up to 1,000 square feet. So, we're looking for the 1,000 square feet and we have a basement that's unfinished.
Note two on 3400.
Yeah.
A family suite may be enlarged to a maximum floor area not to exceed 1,000 feet upon an issuance of a special permit by the planning board. Shall not contain more than one bedroom unless a special permit. Common entry. Shall not have its own front door. Yeah. It actually has to go through the planning board, the border health. Yeah, I'm pretty confident that all we need to look at is the variance for the front, kind of side setback. Kind of middle, kind of, kind of weird.
Yeah, from the 25 feet to 19 feet, right? Or 25 feet is the-
25 feet.
The road that doesn't exist.
25 feet is what's supposed to be, though. If that was just a side, which is probably how they built the garage originally, they want 15. Probably, when was, you said 40 years ago the house was put there?
At least 40 years ago. We've been there 26 years.
So.
And we're improving our existing condition by adding the addition. We're getting closer to the 25, if that's the front yard.
We run into these. I feel bad for the people that have corner lots and they have the-
Yeah, me too.
Same problems.
Trying to make a room, make, you know, to my granddaughter.
All right. Any other questions, board members?
No.
No? All right. Being a public hearing, we'll open it to the public at this time. If anybody would like to speak. Or they just want to. Anything else? All set, board members?
Yes.
If somebody would like to make a motion to close both parts of the hearing?
I'd like to make a motion to close both parts of the hearing.
Motion's been made. Someone seconded. Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Who wants to vote on this one? Well, this, this side of the board.
I have no questions.
All right. So, I, my only discussion is, I'm all for family suites. I'm all for people keeping the family. And that they're definitely getting closer to what they need with the 19. And it's, it's only 20 feet wide. It's not-
No.
It's not like they're building a giant family suite. All right. Good.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Thaddeus and Linda Anderson for a variance from Section 4130, Appendix B for front yard setback of the Tewksbury zoning bylaw to construct a family suite as shown on plans filed with this board. Said property is located at 117 10th Street, assessment map 83, Lot 98, Zoned Residential.
Motion's been made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
You're all set. Good luck.
You guys get a short night tonight.
Sometimes. Any old business, board members? Any new business, board members? Our next meeting is March 26th.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Come join us. There will be cake. Anyone like to make a motion to adjourn?
Would like to make a motion to adjourn?
Motion's been made.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.